Ladies and gentlemen, if you please take your seats. We're going to go ahead and begin this meeting of the June session of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, that'd be great, Ron. We'll do that.
This time, I would ask anybody with an audible device, phone, or whatever, please turn it to silence or off so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of this meeting. We're going to dispense with the policies and procedures for participation in a public meeting. They are, however, available. A copy of those are available at the door if you would like to take one. I'd ask the Planning Commission, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body? And were there any edits or concerns? Hearing none, at this time, I will take a motion regarding the minutes from the previous session.
Motion to accept the minutes.
Have a motion to accept the minutes by Mr. Leggett. Do I have a second? I have a second from this battle. All in favor? Motion, all opposed? Motion passes. Did you vote? Was it? Figure abstaining. I have one abstention from Mr. Hornback, so it passes 4, 0, and 2. We do have an amendment to the agenda that took place regarding the application 2018-03-Z. Mr. Robinson, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. The applicant of this application, Mr. Eric Broadwell, has officially withdrawn this application from further consideration.
Then, at this time, I will ask you to please introduce the application 2018-04-Z. I'd remind anybody who's participating in the meetings that the -- those that would speak on behalf of this application will have 15 minutes to present. You may use all of that time or reserve some for rebuttal. The opposition or those that may just simply have questions, comments, or concerns will have 15 minutes of cumulative time to respond. Once that's over, I'll go back to the applicant to give them an opportunity to speak. Questions from the Planning Commission and from the Board of Commissioners do not count toward either side's time if they're initiated by either the Board of Commissioners or the Planning Commission. Robinson.
Okay. Application 2018-04Z, City of Hiram. Application by Samms Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley LLP, Joel L. Larkin, to rezon approximately 1.223 acres from R2 Suburban Residential District to B2 Highway Business for commercial use. Property is located in Land Lot 406, District 2, Section 3. It's on the south side of Atlanta Highway, east of Summer Hill Road, and it's in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with 14 printed stipulations, and we have received no opposition on this one. I will make a note that that particular location and structure, there has been -- it has been in a commercial use for, I know, at least 40 years, and this is trying to get it back where it's in compliance. Thank you.
The applicant is present.
The applicant is present.
If you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair. One addendum to what my comments were earlier, this is a recommending body, and this particular application being in the City of Hiram will be forwarded to the City of Hiram City Council for final action to be taken at the next available session of that body. Mr. Larkin.
Good afternoon. My name is Joel Larkin, and I'm with the law firm Samms, Larkin, Huff &amp; Valley in Marietta, and I'm pleased to represent the applicant in this application. I like to hear myself talk, especially when I'm on camera, but I'd like to reserve maybe 14 minutes of this for another application some other day. You all have an aerial in your packet that shows the property and some of the surrounding areas. One thing I do want to draw to your attention is this aerial is somewhat dated. It shows a large canopy in front of the building on the store. This was previously a convenience store, and some years back, there were right-of-way improvements, and that canopy was taken. It was then converted to a used car lot, and that's what it was for the past number of years. Currently, the used car lot is closed down, and it's in a non-conforming period of time. So, the property owner decided to expose it to the market for sale, and what we're finding is interested purchasers are all wanting its own before they want to devote any resources to it. Y'all are probably familiar with the area, but it is literally ringed with commercial uses. I think it would be hard to make an argument that this is anything but commercial. I have selected drive-by before a meeting, and I sat out on the property and just looked around it, and you see trees behind it and cover that does isolate it from a residential property that is behind it, but other than that, it's shopping centers and freestanding commercial buildings. So, we have looked at the staff report, and generally, 1 through 13, the way I read them, restate requirements that generally apply to this zoning category, and then Condition 14 states when those conditions would be made applicable to the property. We would probably like to have some discussions about the exact wording of that condition to make sure we're all on the same page, but given the fact that this is within the City of Hiram, I think it would probably be efficient that we have those conversations with the City of Hiram, just so we can properly explain to potential purchasers exactly when those conditions would be triggered. And with that, we're prepared to respond to any questions that you have.
From the county's perspective, I would ask Mr. Robinson, do you have any objection to his take on the 14 stipulations?
Mr. Larkin and I have discussed 14. The intent is agreeable. It's just some wording change where we say no expansion at all. I mean, we want to make sure it's clear if somebody comes in there and they paint and maybe add a little bit in there to meet code, that they would be okay.
Mr. Larkin, you realize that if this body makes a recommendation, it is very possible that they'll recommend it with the 14 listed stipulations. You will have the option at that point to touch base with representatives for the City of Hiram to discuss that, because the final say, again, will be the city council's decision.
That's what I said inartfully. Yeah, we would anticipate having that discussion.
Right. The other option would be for this board to say it's with 13 stipulations, and 14 is to be discussed with the City of Hiram. You could also do it that way.
All right. That would be satisfactory to you?
I think I would actually prefer that the 14th one be on there, otherwise, the 13 would be immediately applicable.
Okay.
And that might be misleading, because I don't think that seems to --
Are there any questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much, Mr. Larkin.
Thank you.
You may take your seat. Is there anyone else here that wish to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none, is there anyone that may have questions, comments, or concerns, or would like to speak in opposition to this application? Hearing none, we will close the public comment portion, and I will entertain a motion regarding I have a recommendation for Mr. Stokes to approve with the 14 listed stipulations. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Hornback. All in favor? Motion passes 5, 0, and 1. Again, this will be forwarded to the next available meeting for public hearing inside City -- City Hall, City of Hiram. Mr. Robinson.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to mention again that the first application, 2018-03-Z, has been withdrawn by the applicant, just in case anyone has come in after that was discussed. At this point in time, would ask the Planning Commission to open a public hearing regarding possible amendments to the zoning ordinance, including senior living. At this point in time, there's, I guess, some discussion on PRD at this time, and then a couple of things to adjunct salvage regulations. That would be continued on at a next public hearing. And I will turn the meeting over to my Director, Ann.
Thank you, Chris, and good afternoon to the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners. If you recall back in the April meeting, we made some changes to the zoning ordinance with regards to retirement communities. We sort of referred to those as the Phase 1 changes. At that time, we had a draft new residential senior living ordinance, and today, I am happy to say that we have final recommendations for that new ordinance. I'm pleased to say that we worked with three builders who specialize in senior living and were able to get all their thoughts and inputs, and as I joked with them, they're the experts in this, and they are the ones that have seniors telling them what they're looking for. So, we have presented. Everyone should have received a copy of -- it would be a new Section V. It's called R-55, Active Adult Residential District, and I'll just give you some sort of highlights of the district. It would allow single-family detached/attached, and as well as independent-living retirement communities that would be seen as multifamily units. We have come up with the appropriate lot-size area setback requirements for each of these three types of uses. We have architectural and landscape standards, some things I'd like to point out that we worked with the builders on, that all single-family detached and attached dwellings shall contain an attached garage, but we are willing to allow just a one-car garage if that dwelling unit is less than 1,400 square feet. We do have some building material requirements in this district. Buildings shall be constructed of traditional design with brick, stone, or fiber cement siding, shakes or shingles on the exterior. We did feel that vinyl accessories and trim would be permissible. We've referenced some standard public improvement standards for each of the three uses, and I'd like to point out that this is for 55-year and older people most exclusively. We have required that they have a mandatory homeowners' association with a restriction that the homes be occupied with at least 80% of occupied units by at least one resident who is 55 and older. And we made sure we put in a notation that the homeowners' association rules should take care of the maintenance of private streets, detention ponds, common areas, and entrance features, should those be part of that community. By adding this new district, we will have to make some changes to a couple other sections of the zoning ordinance. We've recommended changing and sort of standardizing some of the definitions of dwelling. So, we have dwelling, condominium, townhouse, and then we added a cottage dwelling, duplex dwelling, multifamily dwelling, single-family dwelling, and retirement communities, independent living. This new district would also require an addition to Article 6, general provision, with regards to buffers and the limited number of unrelated persons in certain districts. There needs to be an addition to the parking requirements, because cottage dwelling units is a newly defined term, and the building lot and setback table would need to be amended to include this zoning district. Other than adding R-55 to Section 8, we do have one request that is not in the zoning ordinance, so it doesn't really need an amendment, but we would like to amend the rezoning application to require that all applicants for any zoning district submit an exhibit, including color elevations of front, sides, and rear of all proposed buildings or typical units, including building materials, building heights, and any other structures. And that's pretty much R-55, the quick summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and I believe we do have some representatives from the builders that we worked with here if you have any specific questions about senior buildings.
Then, at this time, shall we go ahead and open the floor for public comment?
Sure.
I tell you what, we'll ask the Planning Commission, do you have any questions for Director Lippman?
One question I have is since we're requiring 55 and older, would the retirement community independent living allow three stories? Why would we be allowed three stories in a two-story apartment like that?
Well, they would be allowed to have an elevator, so...
Can we require an elevator with three stories?
Can we require an elevator with three stories?
I mean, it's an architectural design, so, I mean, in theory, yes. I just can't imagine building a 55 and older without having some way for people to get to the upstairs, and it's -- so, I think they'd almost have to do it. But, I mean, yeah, it could be a part of what you have for architectural designs.
I'm looking at it as a public safety standpoint. You got guys that don't have to get these people, when they start having medical issues, they've got to have a way to get them off of that third floor, and I would like to see the requirement of --
I mean, you could add to Section 4 as H that projects with more than two stories require an elevator. You can do that. There's an easy place to amend it and add it.
Any other comments from the Planning Commission to the Director?
While I am up here, I would like to -- Windsong Homes provided me several photographs, and so I just wanted to share one. This is a sample of one of their projects, and this picture sort of features one of the changes that we allowed in the ordinance. There is a setback for the front of the house, and there is a setback for the garage. So, the front of the house will always be in front of the garage, so I just want to share that photograph, and I'll leave that up for people to take a look at.
Any questions from the Board of Commissioners to the Director?
The front of the house that defined as the start of the porch, I guess?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Ann. At this time, we'll open up the public comment portion, and if anyone would like to make a comment regarding the proposed change to the zoning ordinance for Paulding County, if you would please come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Any questions that you may have will be taken down, and we'll address those at the end of the public comment period.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Community Development for working so hard, as they always do, to make some changes. After going over this, there was only...
Excuse me, would you please state your name?
I'm sorry, I'm Deb Seaver. Just two amendments that I'm going to ask that could be made to this is, one is no vinyl siding. I mean, that's a great-looking project. Add vinyl siding to it, it's not a great-looking project. Also, I'd like to see two-car garages mandatory on all of them. Again, add vinyl siding and one-car garage to that picture, and that's not what we want in this county. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment regarding the proposed changes to the Paulding County zoning ordinance? A long pause, I just want to make sure. That being the case, I'm going to close the public comment portion of this meeting, but I will ask Director Lippman if you want to make comment regarding these comments, or do you want to just assimilate those into the notes for consideration as you move forward?
I think just assimilate those notes, that request for the amendment, into what the Planning Commission recommends.
Board of Commissioners, do you have any questions at this time that you would like to address to staff? We've had three comments that were made as far as possible changes to what has been proposed.
Correct.
And I do see a section here, are we going to go ahead? Is it the desire of staff for us to go ahead and make a motion to approve, or deny, or recommend whatever to the Board of Commissioners?
Yes, please.
So, at this time, just for the edification of everybody here to know what we're talking about, we have one proposed change that came from our member Roger Leggett here, as far as requiring elevators with any development that would be above two stories. Is that correct? And then, we have two comments made by Ms. Seaver, who came up and asked for us to disallow vinyl siding, and to add, make it mandatory that they have a two-car garage as opposed to a single-car garage. Am I capturing that correctly? So, at this time, I will ask for a motion with regard to the recommended changes to the Paulding County zoning ordinance, and this particular -- which article is it?
Section B of Article 8.
Section B of Article 8, thank you.
Plus associate, the other associated, changes to other.
Mr. Davis?
I wasn't able to do the last comment that was made.
Did you mark all?
Yes, it is. That's usually not an issue with me. I will redo that again. I will redo that.
Well, I heard you. I was -- I think it was Ann speaking.
Oh, the Director, do you want to expand that, please?
If I could give you the entire list of sections that would need to be changed in the zoning ordinance, there would be changes to Article 3, definitions, Article 6, general provisions, Article 7, parking and other requirements, and Article 8, new Section V, the new zoning district. So, it's Articles 3, 6, 7, and 8 of the zoning ordinance.
I have a question for Mr. Hornback.
What drives the five-foot side setbacks?
Minimum side yard setbacks are defined by the Building Code. You can't have anything closer. The Building Code determines, like, what kind of, how many windows you can have on the side. The setbacks that we recommended are something that we derived from working with the builders.
Can this be fenced between?
I would think so, yes.
You don't get much more room for pushing along the wall. Get fire, and you have what you had at Crest Home.
Well, not if you don't have any. I think that's maybe one of the reasons to remove any usage of vinyl. If we take that out of...
The overhang's two feet. Now, you're down to... I was talking about the width of the setbacks are only five feet. What was driving that? When you start looking at the overhang construction of the house, you're reducing -- I mean, you're getting pretty close limits on a house. This seems kind of tight.
I'll try and throw my best on that. There, when we were looking at all this right here, we had a lot of options and ideas that came from actual builders of these in different counties, and that was a normal setback. They do realize, because we did bring it up in our discussions, that, you know, our setbacks go from wall to wall, but the overhangs may come out another foot or 24 inches. They do know that they had to do fire-rated protection walls because of that, maybe a two-hour?
If you're going from shingles, you're not talking about just walls now. You're talking about shingles.
No, you're talking about shingles. You're talking about the actual overhang itself has to be fire-rated. We've had issues and discussions on other developments in the county with this type But that's... They do know they have to rate the overhangs.
I know you get more bang for your buck for your property, but that's... We're setting the precedence.
Are there any other comments from the Board of Commissioners? I don't want to cut anybody off. I want to make sure that we have the appropriate amount of discussion if that's... If there's other questions. Mr. Davis?
Question from Ms. Skipper. I may... The...
Yeah, because I can barely hear you.
They're recording, so we'll at least get it for the recording if you can't hear me. Ms. Seaver had mentioned the possibility of no vinyl siding or the mandatory two-car garage, and I was curious where in the documentation here that we have, would those amendments, if proposed, would they fit?
Well, under Section 4, which is Architectural and Landscape Standards, under Section B, it makes reference that all dwellings over 1,400 square feet must have a double-car garage. So, you could strike the over 1,400 square feet, and it'd be all dwellings must have a double-car garage. You could do it that way. And then, in the same section, if you go down to Section D, it says, "Buildings shall be constructed of traditional design with brick, stone, or fiber cement siding, shakes or shingles on the exterior. Vinyl accessories and trim are allowed." So, if you want to say no vinyls allowed, you just strike that last sentence, and I think that would handle all of that, if that's what you want to do. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, you have a question?
No, I think I've been answered, though. My mind won't ask. The only thing that you can use vinyl on would be the overhang itself. Is that correct? That's not part of the trim?
I would think that... Well, I will defer to staff on that, since they're the ones who have to administer the ordinance.
I heard it wrong, I think, from what I was thinking, but I know it's not... That's not fire rated. Vinyl is not fire rated.
The idea of some of the accessories, it would be better served to have a couple of the actual builders to explain that. They do know that if it's got to be fire-rated on those eaves, that it would have to be a different material, one that met the Building Codes.
Well, Chris, did I understand it correctly? Where is my mic? Did I understand it correctly? All right. Rooftop to rooftop, what's the distance? Rooftop to rooftop on overhang.
It could be six feet according to that.
Commissioner Crowe, would it be okay if I have one of their...
Sure, sure.
I think they can explain their building much better.
Okay.
Five and five, turn that over.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Romine. I'm co-owner of Windsong Properties, and for the last 15 years, we've built exclusively for the active adult market. So, we're one of the people that Ann referred to who have been involved in trying to help her come up with an ordinance that makes sense for our customers. I have to say just that we've built anywhere between 50 and 100 homes a year in Cherokee and Cobb County and in Paulding County up at Seven Hills. So, we've had a lot of experience with this, and I think the key is that what is it that our customers are looking for? And we've found that, and we know that, because we get 95% plus ratings on our customer satisfaction, and we are selling houses like hotcakes. So, we're obviously doing the right things for the buyers, and I think it would, same thing would apply in Paulding County. But let me just speak to a couple of things. One is the question of where does vinyl appear, and why is there that comment in there that says vinyl trim is allowed? So, first place, the windows are vinyl, okay? And that's a preference from homeowners. They don't want wood windows. Some trim, as in crown molding and other pieces like that, can be vinyl, and the column wraps, if their square columns are also vinyl. So, if we didn't have that stipulation in there, then we would end up with wood, which, again, the customers don't want it, because everybody's looking for a low-maintenance house. So, does that clarify the vinyl question?
It does.
The second thing was about building separation. So, in some counties, they measure building setbacks from the foundation to the property line. Other counties measure from soffit to soffit. I think you mentioned 24 inches, and that would get you really close. On our houses, we never have more than a six-inch overhang on the side. So, our typical house on a 50-foot lot is 39 feet wide, so that when you've added the six-inch overhang on either side, you're at 40 feet, which puts you five feet off the property line. And Ann was correct, is that it's a fire code issue that we don't want to be any closer than five feet to the property line, because then that would have to be a fire-rated wall. But there's no reason to do that.
The stipulation don't say six-inch overhangs.
No, but if, depending on how they enforce the code...
But you might not be the only one building it.
As I said, it's a question of whether the building inspector wants to enforce the code that says, "We're measuring from fascia to fascia," which is the outside edge of the soffit, or are they measuring from foundation? Again, it changes it from municipality to municipality, so that's why we always give ourselves a little extra space. But I think most builders who build houses on small lots are aware of that requirement. The third thing that came up was about a one-car garage, and I don't know if you've ever looked at narrow houses, that can be anywhere from 30 to 40 feet wide, but if you have a 40-foot-wide house, then you have 20 feet of it is garage. So... So half the frontage is garage. So from an aesthetic standpoint, if we can reduce the amount of garage on a small house, it looks better. It's a more elegant subdivision. But really, the compelling reason that why I had to ask, that we recommend, and I had one of my fellow builders say the same thing, is that thirty, over thirty percent of our buyers are single people. And the truth be told, that most of them are single women. And so there's really no reason, they don't, they're not really interested in buying a two-car garage. If you're concerned about resale, there are lots of people coming after us. You know, there are going to be other single people who will be happy to have a house with less garage and more, more house. So if you take a thirty-foot house and you put a twelve-foot garage, now you still have plenty of frontage, and in our case, front porch, which is a more attractive thing. So I would suggest that a single-car garage is acceptable, especially if, in both cases, we're making sure that there's room outside the garage to park a guest without interfering with the sidewalk. Is there anything else I can comment or suggest or?
Yeah, I have a question about on the setback. You said it was twenty-five feet, I mean, uh... What was the front setback?
Front setback is five feet.
What's the garage? It's setting back?
The garage's fifteen feet. So it's a difference of ten feet.
How far is that off the sidewalk?
Well, it's twenty feet off the sidewalk. Because you have, you remember, you're measuring from the property line, not from the curb. But if we start at the curb, let's say you have a two-foot beauty strip, and then you have your sidewalk, and then you have your house, and then you have your garage. So the total distance from curb to garage door would be twenty... Somebody help me out, twenty-three feet? No, it's not right. It'd be fifteen, fifteen plus thirteen is twenty-eight feet, I'm sorry, twenty-eight feet.
I've seen a lot of subdivisions up in Sioux, Chris, that, that when they park a vehicle in the driveway, you can't walk that sidewalk.
Oh, that's absolutely right. That's why, that's why we said the garage has to be set fifteen feet back from the front property line, which is thirteen feet behind the curb. So you have twenty-eight feet from back of curb to the garage door. Put a twenty-foot car there, that leaves eight feet. That leaves you room for a two- or three-foot beauty strip and a five-foot sidewalk. So it's, it's intentionally designed to be, to keep the car off the sidewalk because we are big proponents of people walking on the sidewalks. And the reason we do front porches is to encourage people to connect with each other, which is something active adults like to do. Sit on your front porch, your neighbor walks by, you don't take a bullhorn to yell at him, you say, "Hey, neighbor."
First time I've heard a little strip garage called a beauty strip.
I'm sorry?
I said, "That's the first time I've ever heard a little strip garage called a beauty strip."
I, I have some exhibits here if, if that would help, as far as the building setback, but I think, I think you understand what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, do you have any further questions? Planning Commission? Yes, Mr. Pownell?
So our builder said that he doesn't want to take away the, you want to have the option to this, of the single garage because you had thirty percent of your buyers are looking for a single garage maybe. So if you didn't put any, if you didn't put something in there that said you have to have double garages, are you against that? So would another option be that there's got to be a certain percentage of double garages or there can only be a certain percentage of single garages? So that you don't have a development that you get done with and you end up with ninety percent of it's single garages?
Could I just say that the, there's a square footage limitation, so any house over fourteen hundred square feet has to have two of our garage, which is going to be most of the houses. Because the other seventy percent of our buyers are couples, and couples want a two-car garage. So that, that square footage requirement related to the number of garages, I think, does what you're trying to accomplish.
And that suggestion would mean leaving being four B as written, which was all dwellings over fourteen hundred square feet must have a double-car garage. So it would be not amending that, just leaving it as currently written.
I guess what our citizen that came up and spoke was looking at is where is the safety net? At the end of the day, that you actually have not too many dwellings with single garages. Because I do agree that if you put vinyl siding on the picture above and then you make ninety percent of them single garages, you have a different look in that subdivision. But, but y'all may be able to work out, craft something that works out that where everybody's happy. Looks like a great product that I see on the screen there. Very nice product.
Is this on? One suggestion we could do, if thirty percent of buyers are single, we could amend Section Four B to include all, the last sentence could be revised to all dwellings over fourteen hundred sque, square feet must have a double garage, and then add another sentence that says no more than thirty percent of houses can have a single garage.
In a development.
In a development.
Mr. Chairman, I do know that the public comment's over, but we do also have another builder that was helping us that may be able to answer a few more questions from Piedmont.
Sign in, state your name, and address your comments. The chair.
Good afternoon. My name's Liz Sizemore. I'm with Piedmont Residential. I just wanted to restate and reiterate what our other fellow builder, Winsong, has been saying, that we are seeing a lot of the same things in other areas that we build in, in Cherokee County, Dawson, also in Deals and Gwinnett. And I think that one of the big things that I want to make sure that we're thinking through in terms of the community and Paulding County in general is being able to make sure that other buyers can purchase homes that they can afford within the communities and having that one-car garage. We're seeing the exact same thing where you have about thirty percent of buyers coming in and looking for single-car garages, typically one individual. I just think it's very important for you guys to know that you have more than just one builder that is out there that's seeing this information as well. And just wanted to kind of put that input in there, and any questions anyone has are free to come speak with us afterwards as well. But did just want to kind of reiterate that we are as well seeing the same type of numbers that the gentleman from Winsong had mentioned as well.
Thank you. Any further comment from the Board of Commissioners?
I, I would sort of like to know, a buyer that comes up... A buyer that would come up and look at a house, how many people say, "I don't want this house because it has a double garage" versus somebody would say, "Well, we can't have this house because it has a single garage." What's the, what's the offset there?
If you would, please come back, come back around to the mic, that way everybody can hear the conversation.
What we're seeing in most of our active adult communities is that a lot of these are pre-sale homes. So it's individuals that are looking for an active adult community, like we build in Cherokee County, and typically they are asking for a two-car garage or one-car garage. Most of these are pre-sales, these are not spec homes all the time that we're building out there. If we're seeing that majority of what's selling out there and we put a spec out, it might be a two-car garage. Because like the gentleman was mentioning, sales might be skewing more towards a two-car garage than a one-car garage. But we do tend to see a lot more pre-sales in here, so the customers are coming to us before we're building them out and specifying what they're wanting. Does that answer your question?
Part of the question, Mr. Crowe, if I'm saying this wrong, but I have sort of the same question, I think. The catalyst for the construction of the home may be the initial buyer who was wanting a single-car garage.
Correct.
By nature of what a retirement community is, eventually that house will become available again. Is there any indication that you have people who, after the initial sell, because you're saying that's based on pre-sales, that that house would still be a desirable commodity to someone else? Or are they more going to gravitate toward the two-car garage?
For a one-car? We still see individuals, and we've seen resale in one of our Cherokee County deals, that they have been interested in the one-car garage. I mean, I think it's definitely preference-driven, of course, but we have seen other people purchase that after the initial sale of the home.
I, I was just thinking ahead, let's say that a person had a, a one-car garage. They moved on for whatever reason. The next buyer coming in there may need two cars. So I was thinking that maybe if a person coming in that just needed one garage might, might buy any house with a double, somebody needed a double wouldn't buy with a single.
I, I would like to suggest that it's really a question of a trade-off. So a single person can decide whether they want a two-car garage or a one-car garage. But if they don't, if they get a one-car garage, they might want to spend more money on their kitchen, or they might want to add a fireplace, or they might want to, you know, put other options in. And so what we find is that every individual, and, and by the way, ninety-six percent of the houses we build are pre-sales. In other words, most people at this stage in their life have owned other houses. They know what they want, and I can suggest that, especially if it's a couple, that, that, that the lady of the house is going to demand what she wants in the house, and her husband's going to say yes. And that's serious, you know? But, but, but the single buyer is going to trade off dollars. So if that house is two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, they, they can decide whether they want a two-car garage and a little less in the house, or they can say, "I'm fine with a one-car garage because I only have one car." And they may dress up something else, spend the money somewhere else. So that's really what it comes down to.
Yes, I, I understand in a pre-sale matter where, where you're building a house, it's not a spec home, it's a pre-sale. But we are talking about seniors here, correct?
Who, who move on, yes.
They, they move on.
Yeah.
One way or the other. So then you got a prospective buyer coming in. My question was, and I don't guess there really is an answer, I don't think that if I had just one car, that a two-car garage would turn me away from buying something.
I, I don't think the, having a two-car is going to turn you away from buying it, but assuming that you have, you have choices.
Okay.
I think it's really a question of choice. And that's, that's what I think is so important, is that we keep those options, those choices available. And behind each of those people who bought a car with a single garage and then decide, for some reason they go into assisted living, then there are other, there are plenty of us older folks kicking around who will be following behind them. But I think, I don't want to beat the dead horse here, so, speaking of moving on.
Any other comment from the Board of Commissioners?
Can we stipulate that as we do these developments, that if you're going to do single-car garages, they do it in a certain section of the development and not mix them among the two cars? And the one-car garage not have them back and forth like that? Maybe have one section is two-car and one section is one-car? Is that a, is that a option?
Of course, as an option for the developer, I don't know how you write that into an ordinance.
That's what I'm asking.
That's, okay, yeah. I mean, of course, it's always an option for the developer to develop, there's, there's subdivision that way. But it's nearly impossible to word that for an ordinance that would have the intended consequence that you're asking for.
And also, we've got the issue of safety also because I know you're used to dealing with Gwinnett and Cobb and Cherokee, and their fire department's three times the size of ours. And that's one of the things we, that I worry about, is the setback being so close. And same thing with Alan, that, and I don't want to speak to him, but when you've got elderly people or fifty-five and up people, when you're living in a development that close, they, they need to understand that, you know, that's one of the problems that we have. And we may lose fifteen or ten or fifteen of them at one time if we have a major structural fire with them being that close, as we've done just recently.
I'd like to point out two things. If this zoning district is adopted, we don't have anything zoned R-55. Anybody who wanted to develop under R-55 would have to submit a rezoning application, come to the planning commission for a recommendation, and go to the Board of Commissioners, and would be subject to stipulations, like in our previous case today, where any of these on a case-by-case basis, stipulation could be added and if agreeable by the developer, could be adopted as part of the approval of the rezoning. The second thing I'd like to point out, and this will come up in my next discussion, this zoning district is the first one that we tied to a character area in our comprehensive plan. This district would only be allowed in the community residential character area. And this is an area, I could, I could pull up a future land use map, but this is the eastern part of the county that has sewer and is already more populated. And I don't have a map that shows where all the fire stations are, but I think based on tying a zoning district to a character area, I mean, you couldn't build this without being in that area. If someone came in and they were in the western part of the county, we would tell them they weren't eligible for this zoning district. So that's just something to take into consideration that these areas where it would be allowed are already more populated and probably do have more fire stations located close to them.
Lana, could you explain six, six A?
Oh, the Mandatory Homeowners Association. If, if you're asking specifically about how it has to maintain a fifty-five and older requirement, federal law already has some requirements in it about creating senior communities. And one of those is that if you create something as a fifty-five and older, you are required to continually, on an annual basis, file an affidavit that states that you only have at least eighty percent of the development or more is fifty-five and older. And this puts that requirement, I guess after the initial zoning, on the HOA to do that filing. So they have to continue to do that. What that stops is from a, a project that starts out as R-55 is going to, you know, smaller homes for families with two kids who are thirty. You can't do...
But you do have the ability for twenty percent of that to be that way.
Yes, and that's, that's, that follows the federal guidelines on that, so.
Also, it's limiting to ten percent the amount that in the future could be rented, is that not true?
Yes, it does. And that just, it kind of just stops someone from coming in under this zoning with the intention of making it something different. You've got to stay with this, this senior zoning, family zoning. And then the reasoning for that under federal law for making it separate is because it's a, honestly, it's a form of discrimination by age. And there's an exception to the HUD law that allows it by doing this.
Is there any further discussion by the planning commission? Board of Commissioners?
Yeah. And maybe the builders would want to go back up to the microphone up there. And I'm not trying to beat this dead horse to death here. But is there a percentage that you would be okay with? Because a couple of you have said thirty percent. I don't know that, that, you know, the planning and zoning board, I don't know in their minds if they've addressed the issue yet of the single garage or double garage issue. I still think the vinyl siding issue just needs to be vinyl siding because you've explained the vinyl trim. So I get that, I'd like to see that packaged up to where that's okay. But is there a percentage that you would be good with, or, or we would all be good with, with the single garage? You, you talked about thirty percent. You, you, you talked about thirty percent, but is there a thirty-five percent? Is there a percentage? And I guess some folks are just wanting to make sure at the end of the day that there's just not a project done that everything in there's single garage. So, I'll, I'll leave that, I'm asking you, Jody, so you can handle it from there.
Well, in addressing the vinyl siding question, I believe that that was explained well enough to say that under section, under paragraph four, uh, section D, sub-paragraph D, the building shall be constructed in traditional design with brick, stone, fiber cement siding shakes or shingles on the exterior. Vinyl accessories and trim are allowed, which addresses the windows and any trim product that, that needs to be vinyl.
Correct.
Is that?
I mean, i- if it makes everyone feel better, you can add a no vinyl siding will be allowed to it. Um, because that's the intent of what's written already.
I think the intent, intent is there, but I think it would probably be great if it said no vinyl siding. Uh, I think that would package it all up.
Okay.
And then with regard to the percent of homes with a single-car garage, I do have a note out to the side to say that no more than thirty percent of the development shall have a single-car garage. This is all going to be dependent on the individual on this board that will make that motion, uh, in addition to the question regarding an elevator on anything over two stories. So, if there's any other aspect of this that we need to address, Ms. Lippman or Ms. Skipper, you may need to walk us through that as we go through it, just to ensure that we're encapsulating all of this. Are there any other comments from the Board of Commissioners?
You know, there, there's so many variations here, and, uh, I think you put it very well. Uh, it's based on choice, but, you know, uh, you, you could be married and just want a single-car garage. So, you start dealing with this thirty percent, um, I guess you have to come up with some solution. But, uh, again, I think we can beat it to death.
How about in regards to that?
Would you speak into your mic and make sure that?
My mic is unplugged. I'll share. Sitting here thinking about it, rather than, like, I think that, that a one-car garage versus two-car garage, this should be market-driven things, right? So, why don't we just say that if they want to do a one-car garage on it, it's got to be a pre-sale, that any spec homes they do are double-car garages?
I, I think the, the concern is, once it is built, that product is on the ground until something may destroy it or somebody redevelops it.
Right.
So, the concern is what you're going to get as a mixed bag of, are you going to get predominantly single-car garages in a development and predominantly a two-car garage, multi-car garage in a development? If you limit it by percentage, then it becomes an administrative action on the part of the county staff to ensure that compliance is, is met from the developer on the beginning stages of the development. Easier to catch then than it is to try to correct it later.
Right.
Now, that's, I, I'm not just, going to dissuade you from your opinion, that's not my intent.
No, I understand.
That's what I understand from dealing from an administrative side, as I have, that once it's in the ordinance, the staff is compelled to abide by the ordinance, which will make them compel the developer to.
Right.
But these are also individual tracks, correct? So, property lines are based on single-car or double-car. So, once it's set, you can't change it.
Right.
Right.
So, at this time, and, and again, I will ask Board of Commissioners if you have any comments, Planning Commission if you have any other comments, please jump in now. In hearing none, then I will entertain a motion with regard to the zoning ordinance amendments for the R-55 zoning district. And as Ms. Skipper laid out, there are amendments to be approved for Article Three, Article Six, Article Seven, and Article Eight. Do we need to address each of those individually in the motion?
No, I think you can package that into one motion. But all the other changes you've talked about is within the R-55 zoning district, Section Four. So, that's where you're going to have to be very specific.
Which is under Article Eight.
Right.
So, is there any objection to the noted changes to the definitions, which is Article Three? Otherwise, you can reference it as changes recommended by staff to the definitions in Article Three. If there's an easier way, please jump in.
I don't think that there is. I mean, I, I think you can ask a, as a group, the changes recommended by staff as to Articles Three and get all the way until, and then we'll talk about eight separately.
So, does anyone want to begin the motion? I can't. Has to be one of you.
Maybe we could summarize.
You can make a motion to approve the changes to Article Three, Six, and Seven as recommended by staff. And changes to Article Eight, and we list the individual changes.
Yep. Okay, so that was approved changes recommended by staff. Let's just vote separately as to Articles Three, and is it Six and Seven?
Six and Seven.
Three, Six, and Seven. There's a motion for that, let's get a second on that.
Do we have a second on that? Article Three, Six, and Seven.
Three, Six, and Seven, I have a second.
I have a second, Mr. Leggett, all in favor. Motion passes five, zero, and one.
Okay, now let's deal with Article Eight separately.
All right. Then we need a motion regarding amendments to Article Eight of the Pauling zoning ordinance.
And that would be under?
Section H, R-55.
Yes.
Paragraph four?
Paragraph four, Section B. Uh, make a motion that we change that to all overall dwellings, over thirty percent must have, of the overall development, must have double-car garages. Is that right?
More than thirty percent?
No more than thirty percent of the overall development.
May have single family.
May have single-car garages.
Okay, may have single garages.
Yes.
It's easier to write to, to the thirty percent, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, that's B.
All right, that's B. Uh, D would be, uh, the change would be, buildings shall be constructed in traditional design with brick, stone, or cement siding, shakes or shingle on the exterior, no vinyl siding.
Shall we leave the vinyl accessories and trim are allowed? But no vinyl siding.
I'm good with the accessories and trim, trim allowed.
You got that?
You got that, Lonny?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay, and then you have?
And then, um, H.
Adding Section H.
Adding Section H. Structures of three or more stories, elevators are mandatory. That's my motion.
I'm still writing, I'm sorry. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Leggett. Is there a second? Have a second from Mr. Stokes? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four, one, and one. Again, this is a recommendation to be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration at tonight's meeting. Ms. Lippman? Tonight's meeting?
Yeah.
At seven o'clock. If you have an interest in the subject, please be present. And at this time, unless there's further business, Ms. Lippman?
Yes, there is. The next, the other item that we had on today's agenda was a discussion about PRD. Um, we have had a moratorium on planned residential development since, um, I believe, October of two thousand seventeen. And, um, as a point of discussion, I have a PowerPoint presentation that I would like to present. And I, if that is okay, I will get that started.
Is there music to go with this?
Sadly, no. And you don't want me to sing. And, oh dear. Bad just happened. Okay, here we go. Okay, um, as I mentioned, we've had a moratorium since last October. Um, when the moratorium got started, I decided a good place to look or to start would be to see what we have. Um, and the first couple of slides are just kind of summaries of PRD. Um, there have been ninety-eight PRD zoning cases with three, thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one proposed lots on fourteen thousand, one hundred and seven acres. That's twenty-two square miles. And just, um, for those familiar with the cities in Pauling County, Dallas, Hyrum, Braswell, that is the size of all three of those cities times two. So, that is how much property has been zoned to PRD. Just quickly, the oldest PRD subdivision is Hunter's Glen. Seven Hills is the largest. Um, Springfield and Harmony Grove are the smallest. And, um, actually, both Springfield and Harmony Grove do not meet the fifty-acre minimum and can be considered non-conforming. Average square footage in PRD. The average square footage for houses owned PRD is two thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine square feet. Um, the large, largest footage homes are found in Victoria Heights. The average is over four thousand square feet. Smallest is in Waterford Park, which is one of the oldest, um, PRD subdivisions. And that's compared to an average of one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two average square footage of all homes in Pauling County. And at this point, I do have to, um, give a big thank you to the tax assessor for providing me with the information that allowed me to get some of these averages. Um, average value of houses? The average value in PRD subdivisions is two hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars. This is two thousand seventeen data, I'll just point that out as well. Um, largest average value is found in Bentwater, which is over three hundred thousand. And smallest is in Waterford Park. And this is compared to an average value of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars for all residential houses within the county. Um, how many PRDs have not disturbed any land? We have seventeen subdivisions that have not moved any dirt since they received their rezoning. Um, eight have no direct access to sewer, and one, that's my favorite, has been tabled indefinitely. And I just had to throw in, um, I love this cartoon, it's called Rhymes With Orange, and they have every once in a while, uh, development-related cartoons. Um, so what have we learned? Just to summarize, um, we had ninety-eight zoning cases, um, there's a little typo there. There's thirty thousand, five hundred and fifty-one lots. Um, we have had one hundred and ninety-one final plats that have created eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine lots that are on the ground today. And as of the end of May, we have issued ten thousand plus, I believe the actual number is ten thousand, ninety-three building permits in PRD with a value of over two billion dollars. So, we do have, in addition, the, the senior zoning district was one of the recommendations that came out of the PRD research. So, um, thank you very much for your recommendation. That third recommendation, um, is on its way to hopefully being approved. One of the other things we'd like to do is remove the eight thousand minimum lot size, um, implement some building material requirements, much like we did in R-55. Um, several other recommendations that we have is to no longer accept rezoning requests for PRD. After doing the research on our PRD, I started looking to other counties, and I looked at ten counties around us. And, um, I've confirmation that both Douglas County and Cobb County, I'm looking into several others, have eliminated their, their version of PRD or PUD zoning. Um, we would like to give any properties one year to obtain a preliminary plat or a permit, or they would lose their vested right. And if, Lonny, if you would like to give your vested right speech now or later, just let me know.
If it interrupts your flow, I don't, I don't want to mess you up. Um, vested rights means, um, when a landowner has obtained rights to do a certain development based upon a certain ordinance. And I will say, i- it's kind of a little bit of an amorphous term for how that triggers. I've had each of the commissioners ask me in their own way, um, how long do you have to give somebody, or, or what do you do? Are you always going to be sued for vested rights? Um, and the easiest thing to tell you is there is no black and white rule that says you have to give one year, you have to give six months, you have to give two years. And the reason for that is, I, I looked at this yesterday, as a matter of fact, just to be sure. Um, there are over two hundred and ninety Georgia Supreme Court cases on zoning vested rights. Um, each one of them has a different set of facts, and each one of them has a ruling that go with the facts. So, there's not, um, there's not a lot of blanket rules on, on how vested rights work. There is some case law that says you can give things like this one year to obtain, you know, preliminary plat and to get working on a development, or it can, can lose a zoning, there are some cases on that. So, I tell you that to tell you, I've been asked multiple times, what's the bright line rule on this one-year, that, uh, question that's coming up next that she's going to describe, and there's not one. Any one of these developments that has PRD already is in somewhat of a different situation, depending on their access to sewer, a- and depending on some other things. So, we can give them one year to do the preliminary plat or whatever number we pick, but it's, you know, the question is, are we not going to get sued? Are we going to get sued? You can sue for anything, and we can look at the facts for any one of these developments because they're all going to be different. And that's what I want to, you know, reiterate to y'all.
Okay, and there's basically about forty of these rezonings that would be subject to the case-by-case basis. There is one that the county has ownership of that I would recommend that the county initiate to rezone that from PRD to R-2. Um, and there is another property that was a PRD that has become a church, and that I would ask, um, them to let us initiate a rezoning of that property back to R-2, so we could take two off the books. If we, if we do no longer accept PRD zoning request and then give the ones on the books a one year or whatever timeframe to obtain a preliminary plat, um, I'm going to skip ahead of my list, so for, I'll just go ahead. Um, I'd like to consider some additional residential zoning districts. Um, you know, just go ahead and mention that we would also like to amend the development regulations to include a mass grading ordinance. Um, the development regulations could be amended by the Board of Commissioners, so that's something that we could direct, take directly to them. But I did a little comparison of other counties. Um, I have their two thousand seventeen population, the number of, um, active zoning districts they have. Our neighbors to the east in Cobb County at some point had sixty-three zoning districts. Um, and they have, um, they've kept them on the books because property or zone that. But they have no longer accept rezoning requests. So, that's why I put, um, active zoning districts. And then the last column shows the number of residential zoning districts. So, you can see that this column is sorted by population. Um, I think Gwinnett, Cobb, Cherokee, and Forsyth. I think we heard our, um, senior builders all reference those four counties. I think, um, we have a lot in common with Forsyth County. They are fortunate enough to have Georgia four hundred. But I think in the same time that we were growing rapidly, they were too. And so, if you just take the example of Forsyth, of their thirty-two zoning districts, twenty-one of those are residential. What will happen if we don't do anything? Um, I attend a biannual, or it happens twice a year, Market Watch. It's a, it's a forum for builders, but they, um, are fortunate enough to have gotten on the list. And they, it's sort of a prognosticator of what's going to happen with single-family building. Um, this quote is from the meeting that was last November. Um, I'll just read this, I have several quotes that I just want to leave with people. Um, entry-level buyers are driving much of activity. Sales of homes in the two hundred to three hundred thousand dollar range increased more than thirty-five percent in October from a year earlier. Demand for starter homes is expected to fuel continued sales growth. Builders can ramp up construction quickly enough. Builders face a number of challenges, such as high land costs, labor shortages, and rising material prices. The meeting this year was, um, in early June, and the update is sort of the same. The challenge is really adding inventory at the entry-level space. Chief Economist for the National Home The chief economist for the National Home Builder said, "Can builders do that at a cost that meets buyers' expectation, given rising land development costs, rising wages, and rising land costs?" And I have two quotes from the AJC. This one is from January. Rising prices are likely to push buyers, especially first-time buyers, deeper into the suburbs this year. We expect to see changes in buying patterns this year as buyers begin to look for communities further outside of Atlanta in search of more affordable housing and a wider selection. And this one is just from last week. A RE/MAX Georgia survey found that the price of homes in metro Atlanta's five core counties has risen twenty-one percent in the past three years. During that time, salaries are only up nine percent, widening the gap between salaries and home prices. That means that well over half the homes sold are now far out of reach of households with the region's median income of about sixty-three thousand dollars. So with that being said, our recommendation with PRD is to no longer accept, as of if it's passed, to no longer accept rezoning requests, to give those who haven't zoned one year to come into compliance. There is a, we want to add a section about the building material requirements that mirrors what we did in R-55. And there was a modification a few years ago to allow eight thousand square foot lots. And we would like to strike that. And I will just point out, if you are not ready to act on this recommendation or if you want to, the moratorium was extended one month by the Board of Commissioners last month. And it would need to be extended again if wanted more time to get public input or to...
Right. If we don't pass something this evening about the ordinance itself, then the Board of Commissioners will just need to extend the moratorium another period in order to get input. But essentially doing nothing doesn't help you. So we can do one or the other.
What is the recommendation on the minimum square foot lots?
It just strikes where it went down to eight thousand quite some time ago and just leaves it back at twelve, which was the original PRD. If you think about developments, Hunter's Glen, Evans Mill, some of those original ones were done at twelve, twelve thousand.
So at this time, then, is there a need to open up for public discussion of the matter?
Yes.
So let's do that. First, are there any questions from the Board of Commissioners to staff? Ms. Lippman or any other person on the board, Ms. Skipper? Planning Commission, do you have any questions for Ms. Lippman or Ms. Skipper? At this time, I will open for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak may come around, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the Chair.
Hi again. Deborah Seaver, how are you? First of all, I want to be, people come up here and they just talk and talk. And I just was so direct and so to the point last time. I want the ability to talk a little bit more. You who know me, you know I love to talk. So I just want to share a little bit with you who I am. I've lived in this county for twelve years. I am a real estate broker. And if anybody would want something like this, you would think it would be me. So why am I coming up here? And why am I making these comments and these statements and taking time out of my day? My job, I feel, is to preserve and protect Paulding County. I love this county. I see what I, where I moved into the county. And I see what has happened since I've moved in here. There has been building upon building and clearcutting. And it just, I feel like what we're doing here in the county is we're being reactive instead of proactive. And I really want us to be well thought through any kind of changes that we make. It's like, again, with the senior, you know, I've been selling for twenty-two years. I know what buyers and sellers are looking for. So there's a couple of things that I'm here to ask. I'm first of all going to ask that we delay the adoption to have a meeting with the staff and the public hearing to go over this plan so that we can all submit ideas. So basically, I want to table this until we can, until we really can, to meet with everybody and understand what we're asking, what we're needing, and what changes we make, how it's going to affect us. I think this plan of doing this, of this moratorium, everything like that, needs to be done. And we need to decide within ninety days. We need to, we're dragging it out. We've been doing this, trying this since October. I think this is way too long. I think we need to just do it, figure it out, and implement it. Secondly, I don't want any new single-family building permits. I don't say I don't want. I'm asking that no new single-family building permits be issued until the adoption of the zoning changes and a comprehensive land plan. What I'm seeing, so I specialize in residential and commercial alike. If we're continuing to build out, and I'm speaking about the north end quadrant that I know the best in this community, build out all single-family homes, we are going to have no place to bring in commercial. The commercial is what's going to support our tax base. You know, I've got a lot of people in my community. As a matter of fact, if you look here in Seven Hills community alone, and I didn't get to print out all of the pages because I ran out of paper. I've got front and back, I've got five, over five hundred people signing a petition saying, "Please, please, protect our county and let's stop this. Let's think about what we're doing and let's do this right." You know, again, I'm hearing all over Paulding County, you know, people talking about the rise in their taxes. Well, first of all, their taxes have gone up because their property values have gone up, yay. But our taxes are going to continue to rise unless we bring in commercial to support the rooftops. And you guys understand the economics of all of that. So I think that we need to really go back and look at our comprehensive land plan and really plan this out really good and say, because as we're talking and as we're kind of, you know, figuring this thing out, we've got, I've got on Seven Hills Boulevard, I've got mass grading of a hundred and twenty homes going in on Seven Hills Boulevard. Right behind me, I can show you pictures where there are mass grading of sixty-five homes. We've got, I don't know if y'all know this, but D.R. Horton now owns seventy-five percent of, they've merged with Four Star, and they own seventy-five percent of Seven Hills. Well, you know what D.R. Horton product looks like. I'm sure all of you do, right? They're track builders. That's what we've got coming in there. And so as we're talking and trying to figure this out, we've got these clearcutting and mass grading products going on and continuing to be built. That's why I'm just going to ask, until we can get this thing figured out, that we don't issue any single-family permits. And again, it's up to Lonnie to see if we can do that. Again, no mass grading or clearcutting. Thank you, Ann, for bringing that up. And, you know, and I understand that we, we need to have affordable housing. Everybody, I believe, should have the opportunity to buy an affordable home, right? But do we want to be known? And I'm just going to go out on a limb and say this. Do we want to be known as the county that says, "Oh, you want affordable housing? Go to Paulding County." "Oh, you want cheap housing? Go to Paulding County." I think we should have sections where, you know, it is affordable. But I think we need to be, again, that's part of the comprehensive land plan and really planning this out. Ann also mentioned Forsyth County. And then Lonnie mentioned the vested rights, so there really is no rule. Forsyth County, I've been on the phone with them since probably November because what they did was they had a PUD. They discontinued that and they had a new zoning. And they gave sixty days to implement that. This one year, I say no. One year, you know how many builders are going to come in there in one year? And what's going to happen in a year's time? Do you know how many homes can be built in a year's time while we're trying to figure this thing out? So bottom line is, I spoke my piece. But what I'm asking you guys to do, please, is just to table this for right now. Let's get together. Let's give it a short timeframe of ninety days to come together with community, with people, with everybody, and let's get this figured out. And until then, we're going to table this. Thank you.
You want me to answer the question that she posed? I don't think that there's any way that you can say there's no new single-family permits that can be pulled because anyone that's able to do that already has a final plat. And I do think you have a serious vested rights problem there.
With that, okay. I knew you'd know.
Yeah. So I just, I would advise against doing that. I think that's a lawsuit or five waiting to happen. So. And Mr. Larkin's in the room. He can nod.
Okay. So, so kind of keep, so the best thing that we could do is what? Just keep the moratorium the way that it is until we figure this out?
The moratorium affects taking applications to the zoning category. So like I said, you can't, you don't really have the option of doing nothing today. You either have to extend the PRD application moratorium or you have to do something to the PRD ordinance. One or the other. If you want to take this ninety days that she's asking, then this board would need to recommend that the moratorium be extended. And that, and at which point, after the ninety-day period, we probably bring this back to the board, we'll have a new public hearing.
And even if we amend the PRD, that cannot be effective immediately, right? Because of the vested issues, we've got to give people sufficient notice.
It's effective immediately, but I don't know that we have consensus about what to do just based upon what I'm hearing, so.
Yeah. So I guess we just need to table the new PRD.
Well, okay. You have to understand what Ms. Lippman's asking for. In the PRD zoning changes that she's made, it starts with a paragraph that says, "Commencing June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen, no new applications for zoning to the PRD planned residential development district will be accepted." So it's essentially ending PRD as a zoning category. So you have to understand what she's actually recommending. The other changes would affect those developments that are zoned to PRD that might get in within this one year. And you can correct me if I'm, okay? Does that make sense?
That is an option.
Yep.
For recommendation.
It is. That's essentially what she has laid out, is it ends PRD as being a category you can zone to in the future.
And the other option is to extend the moratorium for further discussion.
And we can decide if there's other things that we might want to do.
Then that's what I'm here to ask the board, to please do another moratorium on the PRD zoning until we can get this figured out.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comment during this timeframe?
Good afternoon. I'm Joel Larkin with Sam's Larkin Huffton Valley. I'm confused. I don't understand, and I'd love to hear, I've not heard any discussion about why we have a moratorium. Initially, I heard that the concern was that valuable commercial property was being lost and PRD developments were occurring where you wanted commercial. The moratorium says you won't accept new zoning applications. You don't have to approve zoning applications if someone files them. So I don't understand the, I want to say hysteria, but that's probably too long, too strong of a word. I don't understand the fear of the PRD. I think the real problem that you have in Paulding County, and I'm from Paulding County now. I live here, so I don't mean to come in here from out of county. But I think the problem that you have with your ordinance is suggested in Ann's presentation. And that is, in my opinion, you don't have current residential zoning classifications that work in the market. The classifications you have have lot sizes and restrictions that are not what buyers are looking for and not what people want to build. And there seems to be a hang-up, and this isn't uncommon with lot size, without looking at the corresponding density number that goes with it. And when you put all the different ideas on here and together, they don't fit. There's discussion about mass grading. Well, the way you deal with mass grading is you do small lot size, not big lot size. You bring the houses together with the same number of them on the same acre so that you can have areas that you can't grade. I think your professional staff is going to tell you that almost as a matter of course, you have to mass grade subdivisions nowadays because of your stormwater requirements. At least that's what all the builders and developers tell me, is that they have to account for every drop of water on every lot. And in order to do so, you pretty much have to mass grade. So just automatically saying no mass grading and automatically doing away this classification, it seems to me you need something more comprehensive. And we need to have a real discussion about what we're trying to accomplish. I found it particularly interesting that we had those quotes and that information about affordable housing and median house prices and everything. And I think those were severely distorted. It appeared they took all houses in Paulding County, which understated, I'm sure, the size of the houses that are really being built because it included all the houses from the fifties and the sixties, like mine, the ones out in the unsuited part of the county. I don't think too many people are building houses the size that she talked about. We had earlier discussion about the garages. And that was for only fourteen hundred square foot houses or smaller. I don't think you're going to find too many of those unless you're building for that seventy-five-year-old widow. So to me, their numbers were all there and they were all accurate, but they didn't really tell the true story. So my opinion, for what it's worth, is we need to decide what we're trying to accomplish out here. I know there's a bunch of people who just say, "We've got enough houses and we just want to stop." And that's, I think, what's really driving it is...
Do you live in the county?
Yes.
Please keep conversation toward me.
Yeah.
I live in the county, and I like Paulding County. I'm trying to get out of Cobb as fast as I can. But I think what's happened is you've got a lot of people who developed in a small area and they're not wanting other people to follow them. And that's normal. But I don't think that we should react by just saying that other people with property they own can't similarly develop. And I think that's the reaction that we're getting. And just to quickly throw out, you know, this stopgap or that, doesn't seem well thought out. It seems to me you don't even need a moratorium. You just have to look at each zoning application on its merits. And you're probably, based on what I see, not going to find too many PRDs that you're going to approve. And then as far as just doing away with things, until you've replaced them, I get developers call me all the time, say, "I want to, I've got this piece of property in Paulding and I want to develop it. I want to get at least two and a half units per acre." You can't. Unless you go PRD, you end up with one point four, you know, some numbers that just don't work without driving prices to a place that you can't sell them. So you have to decide what you want. I don't think anybody here really wants affordable housing. I hear it said all the time, but I don't, I don't know what it is. But I don't think anybody wants it because all the criteria you put in place, you end up with a three hundred thousand dollar house plus. So my comment to summarize it is, I don't see what we're trying to do. We need to pull it together and say, "These are the things we're trying to accomplish." And once we do that, then we can figure out what we need to do to get there. And I thank you for putting up with me.
Is there anyone else that would like to make comment during this portion? We have a couple of minutes remaining.
Well, thanks. I'd like to...
I wasn't talking about you.
I'd like to tell Mr. Larkin, one of my concerns is the sewer capacity, that all the lots that we've already got approved, do we have enough capacity to even fill those and be able to do something with commercial and some type of industry? We don't want to fill them. My aspect, I don't want to fill it all with houses where we're not providing jobs or we're not providing a tax base with commercial by just filling it up with houses. And plus, all of our other, our sheriff, our fire, all that, when you've got all these other people, then you're putting your taxing those services too. That's my part.
I agree with you a thousand percent. Sewer is a big issue, and that drives the developers away separately. But in that, I think that's probably the primary thing we need to look at, county law. Good afternoon, sir. My name is Marty Swain. First off, I apologize. This is my first time here. So if I speak out of context, please correct me and I'll gladly get back on track. I'm a proud Paulding County resident, also a Seven Hills resident. And I want to thank Deborah for fighting for our community. I understand there's probably, you know, we'd be, as a county, facing lawsuits if we try to put a stop to building permits, you know, with the single-family homes and stuff. But I did want to give a perspective of what's going on. Many of you guys probably aren't aware of the mass grading that's going on, this D.R. Horton project that's going on in Seven Hills and probably other parts of the county. But beyond just that, the safety concerns, there's something going on. I welcome anybody after this meeting, if they want to see live video of surveillance and stuff that I have of semis that are going through our communities and neighborhoods to three, four o'clock in the morning. I have, as they're working around the clock, as they're grading this project, school's out right now, the safety of our children. We have eighteen-wheelers... have 18-wheelers speeding up our hills on double branches. And the safety of our children, so as you think about rezoning or anything that you guys have going on, I challenge you to look at some of these videos because these builders don't care. Now, some of the, you saw pictures earlier of Winsong, the 55 North community, they did a great job in our community. D.R. Horton, I'm telling you right now, they don't care to crafts. If you drive down Cedar Crest and, I challenge you guys to take a drive out right now, look at some of the pictures that Deborah's posted on the Seven Hills community, look at the mass grading, and I challenge you guys to look at some of the video of these 18-wheelers. I don't know what the ordinances are, but I'm sure there's some sort of law that they should not be coming through our neighborhoods in the middle of the night or before 7:00 in the morning consistently. I have video, 6:20 in the morning, 18-wheelers coming through our neighborhoods. And all day long, when children are outside playing along the curb, 18-wheeler speeding. Now, I've politely went up and talked to the project managers and asked them about this, nothing. So again, I'll challenge you guys, if you guys want to see video, I welcome that. You know, I'll share it with you guys. I think there's pictures and stuff, but again, I don't know if that will help, but I did want to add a little bit extra perspective of what's going on, at least in our own community. Thank you.
Mr. Swain, just so you know, at the end of this meeting, and Trevor, I'm sorry, I'm going to put you on the spot, I'm going to ask you to please go back and talk with Chief Hess back there. He's over at the Marshal's Office, which is code enforcement, and he may be able to give you some information or may be able to help you with the situation that you're talking about here with the trucks and such.
Okay.
That is not necessarily what we do here. Ours is a recommending body based on zoning ordinances and planning. So I don't want to dismiss what you're saying, but I would rather you talk to an agency that can help you directly with that.
I appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'm going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. I'm going to ask the Board of Commissioners, do you have any comments that you would like to add to this discussion?
I would have just like to say, residents, how do I hear their concerns?
He keeps giving me this microphone. Y'all can hear me, right?
I've already received a nasty gram from the audio visual group telling us that no one's speaking into their microphones and to do it.
Excellent.
Okay, okay, okay. I just want to thank the individuals who's taken their time away from their families to come here and share their concerns with us. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else from Board of Commissioners?
I appreciate all the citizens that have put input into this and I know we've got a lot of work to do. At the end of the day, we, we want to make sure that we continue to have a place where people want to come live. And the gentleman that was just up there, I understand where you're coming from, Deborah. I appreciate your input. And we want to make sure that two years, four years, six years, whatever down the road, that people want to come live here and that we have a product that people will continue to want to come live here as people sell, move, whatever. The area that somebody lives in is very important to them. And when somebody tries to do something to the area that you live in and it affects you, it's, sometimes it's tough to, tough to deal with. And so I understand what you're saying with the masquerading, what's going on there. And I would hope that all the builders that come in would build a product that everybody could be proud of, but that's just not the case. And at the end of the day, they go home and then you live here. So we still got a lot of work to do. Whatever this board does today will be passed on to us tonight and we'll move on from there.
Just to add gratitude, both the citizens and the staff, there has been a lot of work yet. It goes back to October, but something this important, Bernie and I have been talking. We want to get it done, but we don't want to do anything in haste that is this important. We look back, you know, at the turn of the century, when there was no restraints, there were no, were not enough controls, there is too much PRD out there on the books, in my opinion. And this is the time for us to do something about it. And again, applaud Ann. I know how hard she's worked and Chris to get things better defined, to present to us today. But if we're not ready to do it right now, if we need another 60 days, another 90 days, let's take that.
Any further comment from the Board of Commissioners? Planning Commission, any comments? As I understand it, you have a couple of options before you. You can make a motion to extend...
No, it's into your mind.
I thought I was. Let me pull this up. Yeah, that's the first time I've been told Again, you have a couple of options before you. Correct me if I'm wrong. You can vote to extend the moratorium by another period, 30, 60, 90 days, to have more discussion, allow more time for addressing issues regarding this subject matter. Or you can, I'm losing my voice now, so that may answer the question. Or you can adopt or recommend adoption of the changes proposed by staff.
More specifically, you'd be asking the Commissioners to extend the moratorium?
True.
Just as a point of clarification.
I think we make a motion to extend the moratorium.
That is your motion?
Yeah.
A second.
I have a motion from Mr. Hornback to recommend extending the moratorium.
Do you have a timeframe that you're asking?
Do you want to, name a timeframe?
Wouldn't that be administrative need?
90 days is what Ms. Lippman's saying. I'm the only person with the mic right now, so I'm going to use it.
90-day extension.
Just for point of clarification, I agree with you. 90 is a long time. However, if a resolution is met prior to the 90 days, the county can come back and cut short the moratorium. They do have that option?
That's correct.
So if that's a concern, if that answers that question, he can continue with his recommendation of 90 days? Okay. So I have a, I have a motion from Mr. Hornback to extend the moratorium by 90 days to be made to the Board of Commissioners. It will be their decision tonight. And I have a second then from Mr. Leggett. I will ask for a vote. All in favor? Motion passes 4, 0 and 1. Ms. Battle had to step out, so. Any further discussion? At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn from Mr. Stokes. I have a second from, was it Mr. Lowe? All in favor? Motion passes 4, 0 and 1. Thank you very much for your time.